We'll bring this meeting of the Peterborough City Council for October twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-three to order. The first item of business is our land acknowledgement. We respectfully acknowledge that we're on the treaty and traditional territory of the Mississauga, the Ashen Abic. We offer our gratitude to the First Peoples for their care for and teaching about our earth and our relations. May we honor those teachings. We next have thirty seconds of silent reflection. I'd ask everybody to praise their eyes for the singing of the National Anthem. Of rights and freedoms. The first item of business we have in our agenda this evening. This is a very special presentation that we'd like to make to the Peterborough Century Twenty-One Lakers. In the annals of sporting history, very few teams, it's an amazing accomplishment that a team could win four straight championships in a row. Rarely happens. When you look at all the major sports, whether it's the National Hockey League or the NBA or the National Football League and any others, to win once is an amazing accomplishment. But to win four is truly remarkable. And those four championships are a great reflection on the players, the team, the management that made it happen to bring together diverse talent and mold them together in a real unison force to win those four championships. And it would be a remiss, I know he's not with us tonight, but it would be remiss if I didn't mention the great work of one Ted Higgins over many decades. When senior A lacrosse was perhaps on its last legs, Ted Higgins with his sure determination had made sure that that wasn't happened, invested a lot of his personal time and financial resources to bring it back, which is the great game, the great Canadian game that we enjoy so much each and every summer right here in Peterborough. And we have a distinguished group of players and board members with us this evening. Rob Hope, Turner Evans, Bob Keese, Scott Robertson, Dale Reed, Pete Hines, Shane Carter, Len Powers, and Brian Cowie. If I could ask a gentleman to come up and join us in the horseshoe here. We want to make a presentation to Brian Cowie. Colleagues, if you'd like to join me in the inner circle here, we want to get a picture with these most distinguished athletes. Brian, the microphone is yours if you'd like to. Natalie will help you out there, or Lenny?
Thank you. I'm Len Powers, I'm Board Chairman of the Century Twenty-One Lakers. The four years in a row is quite a feat. The only other team that has done that is a Peterborough team. And that was in nineteen fifty-one, two, three, four. So over seventy years, there is no other team that did it. Also like to take this opportunity to thank council for helping us purchase the carpet. Excuse me. It definitely helps us through when ice goes in at the Memorial Center, excuse me, for our playoffs, to host the Man Cup. So it's beneficial, not just to the Lakers, but I believe the city on that too. And to let you know that we've actually made our first payment on that. So rest assured, we have four more payments and it's in our books each year. So again, thank you for this honor tonight, Brian. It's very good, thank you.
Thanks so much, sir. The next item we have is the approval of minutes, September twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-three. So I'd like to move then, councillor Chica, secretary of council Real, comments or questions? We'll go to a vote. That is approved. Does any member have a declaration or pecuniary interest at this particular time? Councillor Dugay, please.
Thank you, your worship. I will declare an interest associated with item ten A one, which is a staff report rezoning of eight, eight, nine Western Avenue. And I believe associated, assuming that's approved, there would be subsequently implementing bylaw. So I would declare conflicts for both items, thank you.
Thank you very much, councillor Dugay. Any other members of council want to declare a pecuniary interest at this time? Not seeing any. The next item is registered delegations. We have several this evening. The first one was going to be Peter Robinson, but that's canceled. The number two is Bruce Bozak, the president of Peterborough Pickleball Association. Mr. Bozak, please. You will have five minutes to make a presentation. At the end of four, I will let you know when you have one minute left. Mr. Bozak, please.
Give me, I go first. My Leo, and members of council, thank you for the opportunity you appear for you today. Ted, my name is Bruce Bozak, and I'm the president of Peterborough Pickleball Association. We are here today to support and fully endorse the city staff report and your approval that was presented on the October tenth council meeting. Peterborough Pickleball Association was formed in October two thousand and twenty-one, when about ten people on a cold October day sat around on the Bonnerworth Courts and decided we need an association. Pickleball in Peterborough goes back to about two thousand and fourteen, when a small group obtained approval to convert a tennis court at Knights of Columbus Park into four pickleball courts. And the craziness started then. As many of you are aware, pickleball is one of the fastest growing sports in North America. In Peterborough, we are approaching four hundred members. That's just since two thousand and twenty-one. And we expect to hit five hundred members next year. Needless to say, more courts are needed. And now with more in the future, sixteen courts are a great start. At this time, I just would like to acknowledge and appreciate the cooperation that we have had during this time working with city staff in order to maintain the courts that we already have. So why is pickleball taken off? Well, there are four, we think, main reasons. And we feel it contributes to the success of this game across the country. Social aspect, the health aspect, the competitive competition aspect, and the economics. The social aspect is that it's a fun, friendly, I'm going to use the word habit-forming game, which promotes interaction between players and definitely meeting new friends along the way. It is played by men and women, young and old, and in fact, younger generation now, I'm talking these thirty to forty-year-olds are grouped now a part of the largest portion of the growth in the game. It is no longer predominantly a senior sport. It is also being introduced at the school level, so it is growing. The health aspect is that it gets people out playing, getting exercise all year long, whether it's either indoors or outdoors. This was especially true during the pandemic, where we could safely distance ourselves. And if you really wanted to get your ten thousand steps, that was the way to do it. Pickleball can be very competitive. There are many tournaments being held across the province throughout the year. In fact, we had three tournaments this year in Peterborough alone. Our last tournament in July attracted over two hundred and sixty competitors. Our largest one yet. This is our third year, I believe, that we've held this tournament. Last year, the Canadian National Pickleball Champions was held in Kingston. Peterborough members won forty-four medals there. One of the better showings by a club. In fact, one of our members won an impressive four gold medals during that week-long event. The economic benefits support the city, the Pickleball Association, and local businesses. The city will receive revenue through court rentals, programs, and could even entertain sponsorship similar to what you've done at the
Brucio, blood in the left.
Healthy planet arena, thank you. The Pickleball Association uses tournaments and programs as a funding source for future programs, improvements, and equipment. This year, we were able to put on about twenty programs from learn-to-play to advanced competitive play at both Knights of Columbus and Bonnerworth Park. Tournaments bring in competitors from the outside of the people area, which increases revenue for hotels and restaurants. The installation of sixteen courts were only enhances make Peterborough a destination place for pickleball. We are in a great location. Major tournaments could also be accommodated, such as in the Ontario Championships, which takes place over four or five days. And based on conversations that I've had with the Peterborough Tourism, which is a great supporter of pickleball, suggests that the anticipated economic impact could be between sixty thousand to a hundred thousand dollars per event. We are certainly prepared to assist the city when needed to ensure the courts are constructed properly, as we have the expertise. We look forward to it. Finally, I'd just like to say that, as they say in the movies, if you build it, they will come. This is our field of dreams. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Bruce. Could I get your address just for the public record?
Eighty-five Lansdowne Street West, Armament Tool, by Peterborough, Ontario.
Bruce, thank you very much for your detailed presentation. There may be some questions. No questions? Thank you very much, Bruce.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Jeff Ricks and Dan Post from the Peterborough Skateboard Coalition. Gentlemen, if we could have your addresses for the public record, please.
Can I leave my address off? Because I work in a field where I do not really want it on the public record.
Not a problem.
I'm at eight oh one Argyle Street. I'm in Ward Two, though.
Five minutes, presentation at the end of four, I will let you know when you have a minute left. Please proceed, gentlemen.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Leo, members of council. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you tonight. My name's Dan Post. I'm a skateboarder and a dad, and I live in Ward Five.
My name is Jeff Ricks, and I'm also a skateboarder and father of two children and live in Ward Two.
We are the founding members of the Peterborough Skateboard Coalition, and we're here to offer our endorsement of the recommendations found in the new parks and recreational facility study, specifically the skateboarding strategy and the proposed Bonnerworth Park project.
We'd like to also use our time to say thank you to the many supporters on council that we see here and to the members of the city of Peterborough staff who have helped get us this far. See, we're all back there, and Chelsea Gray as well on their work on the report. It's clear to us from reviewing the skateboard strategy found in this report that our voices have been heard, and that's rare for us to say, honestly, in front of a city council. So the city staff understand the significant impact this investment will have on the health and well-being of our kids, families, and all park users.
Jeff and I formed our group to try and save a Peterborough skateboard community in crisis. Kids here are feeling forgotten and uninspired. Less visitors are stopping by on their way through town, and all the wonderful people that discovered skateboarding during the pandemic just don't feel included in our park. When the current park was built twenty-three years ago, skateboarding was probably the fastest growing sport in North America. Unfortunately, now we're seeing what happens when you don't grow alongside it. Skateboarding is now an Olympic sport, but by any measurable modern standard, our skate park is inadequate.
The concrete needs continual repair. The space currently lacks supporting amenities, and the outdated design of the park creates a barrier to entry for newcomers. Last summer, we developed a two-week, or two-week-long summer camps for kids within the city of Peterborough, partnering with the city, but they ended up being canceled because our own park wasn't safe enough to host them. Just yesterday, a thirteen-year-old named Fay DeFazio Ebert from Toronto won the Women's Gold for Canada at the Pan Am Games, a credit to Toronto's investment in over twenty-five skate parks following the implementation of their skate park strategy years ago.
We don't expect council to understand all the nuances of skateboarding, except maybe councillor Burke. You may not know what a kickflip is any more than we know what a doink shot is, which is why we're asking you to trust us when we say it's time for Peterborough to step up. Jeff and I aren't just advocates, we are skateboarders too. We're at the park every week talking to these kids and families. We know firsthand the real and significant mental health benefits that skateboarding gives to struggling people. We also spend a lot of our time leaving Peterborough to skate at other parks and places popping up in surrounding communities, all around places like Lindsay, Norwood, and Newcastle are showing their kids that they are worth investing in.
Peterborough needs a more accessible and inclusive skate park for all skill levels and ages, a place to become a hub for youth programming. We already have support from community organizations like Big Brothers, Big Sisters, who want to invest in skateboarding, and they're waiting on a place. We also want to honor and recognize the work of those who came before us in the skateboard community. Pay homage to the history of Bonnerworth Park, as councillor Real talked about last, or two weeks ago, while looking forward to building a space that welcomes in the future generations of new park users.
We fully support the redevelopment of Bonnerworth Park as a multi-sport hub. We are likewise eager to collaborate with the Pickleball Association and the BMX Group on a world-class destination for our region. We welcome the opportunity to help re-envision the skate space in accordance with the recommended increases to our inventory found in the report.
We're also pleased to see skate dots form part of the skateboard strategy, as this represents an easy way to add skatable spaces to each ward throughout the city. Small retrofits to an existing park or new obstacles within new parks will help ensure neighborhood accessibility and inclusion remain a focus as well.
My kids are the next generation of skate park users, and right now I do not feel great about taking them to the skate park. But with this plan, I can see a brighter future ahead. I see more kids deciding to stay here, maybe dreaming of a spot on the Olympic team. I see Peterborough becoming a must-stop city on the way to the cottage, and I see picnic tables and bleachers surrounding the skate park filled with neighbors getting to know each other better.
Gentlemen, you have one minute left.
Right now, we're too far away from these important goals, but we can get there with the creation of a new space built with the hearts and minds of the people from our own community. And we've heard council say that they are going to continue to consult with us. So we're asking council to vote yes to the recommendations put forth in the study and send a message to our community that they matter enough to provide a place for them to grow.
And we ask you to keep all this in mind when it comes time to vote on the budget and get this plan into action immediately. Let's not wait until another pandemic to provide adequate outdoor rec spaces. Our community isn't just looking for another skate park, we're looking for a lifeline. You brought up Ted Higgins and the moment twenty-plus years ago when lacrosse was on its last legs and he invested his time and energy. This is our Ted Higgins moment right now. This is us trying to breathe new life into skateboarding, so please, we hope that you will move ahead with this project. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Gentlemen, thanks very much for your presentation, and you're close by. You may provide some new recruits for Bruce and pickleball at the same time. That would be a good thing. We're getting old. I saw a question down here. Councillor Burke, the councillor Baldwin, please. Councillor Burke.
Thanks, Mayor Leo, through you to the guys. Thanks a lot. That was an incredibly concise and impactful presentation. And since before I've been on council, I've been hearing about how organized you are, and I think that that's really necessary to push these ideas along. I actually never thought that I would be hearing about skate dots, because like when I was growing up, it was like, it was like a guerrilla tactic, right? Like people would take their concrete overnight and try to make these little things, but that sounds amazing. My question is about the supporting amenities. Can you expand on that, please? Because the way I assume it, the things that I assume you're talking about are like shade, access to water, and access to bathrooms.
Those are the main ones. So putting in a pavilion will really be helpful. We were on, I think, a waitlist and talking to Leslie for a shade shelter at some point, but it was, it's like a two- or three-year wait. And so that was the main access, water, washrooms.
Yeah.
And then the space for when it rains. So actually acquiring the lawn bowling facility could, we see that as a potential use of that space as well, and we hope that we would be thought of for that space.
Yeah, and to that note, and the youth programming mentorship that we want to bring to the space, it would be nice to have an indoor component as well, where we could do some little workshops on how to take a skate photo, have a makeup scene, these kinds of things. We have a whole host of ideas, we just need a great space. The current park has no bleachers, no picnic tables, very little access to washrooms, no water and no sun shade, and our parking has basically been taken away with the development of those new buildings. So adding those into a new space, making those part of the plan from the beginning will be a phenomenal improvement.
Yeah, I mean, currently, you're right, there's no shade, there's no access to water, and the bathrooms by the tennis courts are locked. I guess my question would be to you guys, like, just off the cuff here, is that how do we not repeat what happened with the first park? Because I don't know the history of that, but I know that the park feels very tight. How do we make sure that what we're building is on par with other parks?
I think that'll be reflected in consulting with our community, which we're happy to continue facilitating. We've done polling, and like I said, we're talking to the kids all the time. That park was built, at the time it was built, and we're very grateful for having it. Don't get us wrong, it's been better than nothing for twenty years. But when that was built, it would have been consulted as well at the time and potentially built on a design that was suitable for the time. But like I've mentioned, unlike most mainstream sports that are played
But like I mentioned, unlike most mainstream sports that are played essentially unchanged as the day they were invented, baseball and football and basketball, the rules don't change too much. Skateboarding has evolved immensely from twenty years ago. What used to be, you know, in the sixties, people strapping wheels on the bottom of the surfboard is now an Olympic sport. And so you can imagine the infrastructure has to change along with it as kids continue to get better and push themselves into all new areas they just didn't know they were possible before. Skateboarding is a world of possibility that's constantly changing, and the places we skate need to reflect that creative potential and be a place that can grow and change along with the sport, so.
We have councillor Baldwin, councillor Duay, councillor Purnell. Councillor Baldwin.
Yeah, just quickly, your worship certainly will endorse the program later this evening. I'm just wondering, you give lessons to senior councillors? Because if you do, I'd love to be able to pay for a lesson for councillor Real. I can see him campaigning in twenty-twenty-six on a skateboard.
Absolutely. We'd love to take him out.
You don't have to pay, we're looking to offer lessons for free to the community.
I'm sure there's a question here, I'm sure there's a question.
I think the question was, do you offer instruction or lessons, your worship? And the answer was yes for free, I believe.
Very good.
Yeah. Thanks, guys. Sign him up. Just for him, though.
Councillor Duay, please.
Yes, your worship, Jeff and Dan. I'll start off with a comment, and then I do have a question. So some twenty-three years ago, when I was the city's planner, I was responsible for and led the staff report that created the outdoor skate park. I can confirm for all council, there was consultation at the time with persons that were directly involved in the industry, and it was a first.
Yeah.
Twenty-three years ago, this was a bold move by our municipality. And you're right, the sport has most certainly evolved, and I'm happy to hear and I've learned that there's been ongoing consultation. My question, your worship, will there be some recognition of the original founders of the skateboard park as part of your redevelopment?
Totally.
I'm getting thumbs up, so.
Yeah, yeah, we've had those conversations, and we have those conversations with our community outside of official proceedings as well, because a lot of people come to us online or social media and say, hey, I was involved in this project twenty years ago, I was on the skate park team, and I helped lobby for that. And so we want to pay back to those people that came before us in the community. We envision, and we're talking revitalization of Bonnerworth, we're not talking about scrubbing everything clean and, you know, and erasing everything from history. There's a recognition that that park was built. That's how parks were being built at that time. I came from Mississauga, where there was a Shell Park skate park in Oakville nearby that's very similar. And back to that project, though, I once harassed Henry Clark, my former board councillor, about building a skate park, and he sent an email to me. That was some of the best five hundred thousand dollars the city has ever spent on that park. Also, and it's pretty common practice to have a board of, I know sponsorship came up before, by all means, let's sponsor the park, it's a very standard practice, especially in skateboarding. You know, there's a number of action sports, big-name companies. Jeff and I ourselves have ties to the industry that would look for sponsorship. It's also very commonplace to have a board of recognition for any other founding partners or associations. But also, we want to know, and we talked about the mental health crisis around skateboarding in the city. We've had a number of people in our community that we've lost over the years as well, young kids, whether it's through suicide or otherwise, in the skateboard community. And we do have currently a few plaques in place, some formal plaques, and we have some informal writing as well on the walls of the skate park. We would like to continue that tradition in new space as well, bring those plaques that exist and/or update that to continue honor the kids in our community that lost it, but hopefully we'll be able to put it into something like that by upgrading our facility. Thank you.
Councillor Purnell, please.
Thank you through you, mayor. Thank you very much to both of you for coming tonight and expressing your support and for your patience. And I will get to a question, because I know I need to ask you a question. But when we first met at the beginning of this process, we just had to be patient while the process happened. We had to do the inventory of all of our parks and green spaces and figure out what we had, the inventory of what facilities we actually had. And then, of course, this particular report, as well as what can we fit where? And through all of those discussions over the years, it was, okay, we need it, we need a skateboard park, we need the bike pump track, we need the pickleball courts, so those really came up in the conversation. And you were patient and patient, waiting for these studies to happen. And then, of course, we just had all the user group discussions as well as to make sure that we were getting it right before it ever came to this table. And I know it seemed like a long haul for you guys, but I really appreciated your patience as we worked through all those very critical pieces to get to this very successful report and outcome. So I do thank you very much for that. And of course, your input, and we are, and I'm kind of a rhetorical question, but I'm assuming you're going to help us with the design, with the sponsorships, helping us to understand the culture and make sure we respect, you know, the people that you were just talking about, that sort of thing. And I was, I see your heads nodding yes. And can you tell us, give us an idea of about how many youth and adults are involved right now with your association, even informally?
Even informally, I mean, I don't know, we posted a reel from this council last week, and it hit a thousand views or more. So there's people with eyes on it, and there's, I'm getting messages from Ontario Skateboarding and other organizations that are saying, wow, look at what Peterborough is doing. Like, they're doing it right, is the comments that I'm getting back. And so that's really cool to see from a perspective for us, because we've been working with you for a couple of years now lobbying for this. I remember hopping on a Zoom call with Rob, maybe during the middle of COVID, and he did warn me, he said it's going to be a couple of years, we got a lot of projects off the go, and it's turned out, but it's, we're so excited. There's a lot of kids in the community that are not even naturally connected to our association, that use the park, and that's the other piece that I think is maybe different than a pickleball association, but also the same, like my brother goes and plays pickleball on his own, he doesn't play in a league. But we have, we see different users when we're there on a Saturday morning with our kids than when we're there on a Friday night, or when we're there on a Thursday night even. And, you know, I've met people in their fifties and sixties skateboarding in Peterborough. I had the opportunity, we dropped into one other summer camp that was running, we taught just a couple of lessons, and we got to teach some young girls how to ride skateboards, and that was very exciting for us, just to see those boundaries being broken down. It used to be young males, well, younger than us usually, that we're doing it. But it's all ages, all ethnicities, all genders, like it's a very inclusive space, but it's, the park is not inclusive to beginners. Our network, our list of who we contact regularly, and like you follow us on Instagram, we have a website, ptboskate.com, where we update the community. A list of a few hundred of skateboarders, scooters, BMX, and as well roller skaters. There's a faction of roller skate people in the community as well, believe it or not, that want to use the skate park, and we've seen them down there. So, yeah, we're here representing skateboarders, but when you factor in all the users as well and the people that may visit, our network alone and through Instagram and otherwise, a couple thousand visitors to the park.
Fantastic, and thank you both for your continued enthusiasm and advocacy work on behalf of all of those people in the community. Thank you.
Councillor Real, please. Councillor Real.
I can hardly wait to do a backslide, a boards slider, a bonk, cabriolet. I'm there. I'm willing, and all these terms I know now.
There you go. Often take a normalization of people very seriously.
I want to thank you guys for being here tonight, and certainly look forward to it. I think it's a park that's been more used, but needs to be refurbished and redone, and certainly meet the needs of the community. So thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Any further questions for Jeff and Dan? Gentlemen, thank you very much for being with us this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Next, we have Ken Toley. Ken, please. Again, if we could have your address for the public record, five minutes. At the end of four, I'll let you know you have one minute left.
Thank you very much, Mayor Lille and members of council. I appreciate this opportunity to talk to you this evening. And, you know, my, what I'd like to discuss is the, yes, it is ten fourteen Brewer Street. And, okay, ten fourteen Brewer Street is the closest house to the pickleball courts. So now you're going to hear the other side of the pickleball story, because it is, I acknowledge that pickleball is very good exercise, it's a great social thing. I have nothing against pickleball, per se, but I am going to, what I'd like to do is have you right now just listen to what I was listening to just this afternoon. This is a recording made this afternoon from my backyard. Imagine if you had to listen to this twelve to thirteen hours a day, seven days a week, for months and months on end. It drives you literally insane, and if you think I'm exaggerating, I ask you to just go online and Google pickleball noise, and you will see that I am not alone. This is like a serious mental health issue. It is not a compatible sport with residential areas, and for that reason, I am fully behind this new Parks and Recreation Study and its recommendations, provided that pickleball is removed from the Knights of Columbus Park, because it is incompatible with residential areas. There's more noise, too. This was this morning. I would regularly wake up to the sound of that leaf blower. All through the summer, after rain, they would remove the water from the courts with a leaf blower. And this morning, it was to remove the leaves. Now, I can hear this, I can hear the pock, pock, pock of the pickleball inside my house with all of the windows and doors closed. It was waking me up in the morning, and it was preventing me from using my yard. I couldn't read in my yard, guests didn't want to come over because of the noise. And I had to change my schedule so that I would go to bed early so that I would wake up before the pickleball woke me up, because it just drove me nuts to be woken up by it every morning. So, and now if I can't stay up late at night, because I know I will be woken up by the pickleball in the morning. So, anyway, I'm behind this new study, provided it moves the pickleball. And once again, I want to be clear, I'm not against pickleball. The second issue I'd like to raise with this is parking and traffic. Ever since the pickleball has gone in, and it is, and this has increased over the years, the amount of traffic on my street and neighboring streets has risen considerably. And my street, Brewer Street, joins with Douglas Street and McCannon.
Ken, you have one minute left.
Thank you. And people slow down through that intersection to see if anybody's playing. They also park in front of my house, in front of my neighbor Brian Dodd's house at five sixteen Douglas Street. He has great concerns about this. Then they cross the rail line to get into the pickleball courts. And I see this as a safety hazard, and we would really like to see that zone right through the intersection there designated a no-parking zone, if that is at all possible. Finally, the study showed that, you know, there really was already adequate facilities for tennis in the City of Peterborough. So if you're going to expand the tennis in the park, please do so slowly, and please consider that the lighting has, if you're planning on putting in lighting, which the report states is going to be a real irritant to neighbors. So I really do not want lit courts beside me with people playing late, but it's a lot quieter than pickleball, so I'll accept the fact that tennis is there. And just one final note here is that I'm pleased with the recommendations, but there was a thorough consultation supposedly done for the Parks and Recreation Report, but that was of the users of parks, it was not of the residents who live around the parks. I was never consulted about the pickleball. And in future, I think it would be well worthwhile for the city to, when they're doing consultations about park use and facilities, that they actually include the residents and the homeowners who live around it and who should be stakeholders and who have to put up with this longer and more than anyone else. Thank you.
Ken, thank you very much for your insightful presentation this evening. Are there any questions for Ken? Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
The next presentation we have is from Aaron Kemp, Bike, the Peterborough Community Bike Shop. Aaron, please. Could I have your name and address for the public record, please?
Absolutely. Good evening, Mayor Lille, council members. I live at one ninety-two Elmer Street North. So my name's Aaron Kemp. I'm a bike member of Bike. I'm also an active cyclist and a father of two young children, who I hope through encouragement and subtle peer pressure will also adopt my favorite hobby. I'm here to offer mine and bike support for the construction of the pump track, as set out in the staff report, and encourage council to proceed with this much-needed recreational infrastructure. I wanted to take this time to thank city staff for their support over the many years, and especially the last few with Rob and Chelsea. I've been involved with advocating for a pump track for probably two, two and a half years, but I know other members of Bike have had many discussions with staff in terms of meetings and onsite visits as far back as twenty sixteen. So this is a sort of a long time coming, and we're very happy to see it making some meaningful progress. What I thought I would do, because the report describes it, I think, as a specialized bike facility, there's also mention of an all-wheels park, a pump track and parts. I just wanted to give everybody kind of an overview of what a pump track actually is. I've had the opportunity to meet with a few council members a few years and do smaller presentations, saying, you know, here are some nice pictures, this is what we're talking about. So a pump track is a closed-loop track consisting of a series of ideally paved rollers, which are smooth mounds of varying sizes, so think of big speed bumps essentially, and then banked corners. The name a pump track comes from the pumping motion you create with your upper and lower body as you go around the course, gaining momentum. It's not a BMX racetrack like you'd see in the Olympics. That, the big difference is those have a defined start and a fine end in your racing, so you go from point A to point B, the race is over. This shares similar characteristics in terms of, you know, obstacles to roll over and berms, but then it'll connect back on itself, and you can go essentially till you get exhausted. The benefits of a pump track, so what we, and I think city staff and through the report have sort of identified as the ideal solution is a paved surface. The main reason for this is you can build dirt bounds and banked corners relatively easy, they're much cheaper. The problem is, if you don't use pavement or some sort of other hard surface, although basically everybody uses pavement, you really limit the user group that can use them, and they also require using dirt, constant maintenance and upkeep. If you use a paved surface, you can accommodate bikes of any variety, so run bikes, pedal bikes, scooters, skateboards, roller blades, wheelchairs, really anything that has wheels, which is why they're often called all-wheel tracks. They're a safe recreational facility for people of all ages and abilities. I think the key about that is they are not intimidating. If you can ride a sidewalk, you can ride a pump track. They have a very low bar of admission that way. It may not look like it, but they are incredibly good cardio exercise. Going around one, one time, I can guarantee you, you will be exhausted and panting, because not only is it hard to go around, just physically, like up and down, you forget to breathe, and then you get exhausted, and you're huffing at the end. And I think the other thing I want to touch on was, as it's envisioned in the report at Baru Park, the track would be an excellent synergy with what else they're proposing in terms of recreational facilities, as it creates opportunities for families like mine and many others to get out and play together. I can walk our dogs as our kids, you know, ride around the track or vice versa. People can play pickleball, or depending on its all-structure. So it creates a really dynamic, interesting recreation destination in the city. And then lastly, I just want to really drive home the point that pump tracks are incredibly really drive home the point that pump tracks are incredibly flexible designs. Really the only requirements of where you can put them is it needs to be a relatively flat surface that you're starting off with.
There can't be a one minute left.
Thank you. And you need to be able to make a loop. Other than that, you can go around trees. You can plant shrubs all over them around other natural features. Really, you're pretty much limited by your imagination and whatever budget you want to allocate to the project. So in closing, I just want to please urge you all vote yes on the report so we can ideally move this forward and get this bill for the city. Thank you for your time.
Thanks very much for your presentation, Mr. Kemp. I know there's a question. Council Real, please.
Council Real. To the chair, to Aaron, thank you very much for being here tonight. And certainly before Counselor Baldwin gets me on pump track, I'm already signed up for the skateboard. My, my question, when I was coming to the meeting tonight, a guy stopped in the parking lot. I wanted to talk about bike etiquette. From East City is probably the most used trail in the city. And the bike etiquette people are not, there's a lot of seniors, a lot of people there. And there's no bike etiquette. Is the bike shop or do you know anybody that, that schools people on how to ride a bike on a trail, passing on the left, all of these things? Because there doesn't, there seems to be a lack of bike etiquette in the city, even though it's great that people are taking up cycling and biking, but this person stopped me and said, I'm watching people break the law, but I'm also watching them make it almost endanger and hurt people because of their bike etiquette. Do you have any comments on that?
Sure. So I can't see for bike as an organization at that point. I can go from personal experience. I remember where I learned, you know, hand signals, stopping and stop signs as a kid on a bike was at school rodeo, like bike rodeos in elementary school. I couldn't tell you if those still exist anymore. I haven't got to that stage of parenting with our children yet. So I don't know if that still exists. I've also seen in like, I mean, going to university and things, I know there was, police would occasionally do crackdowns in specific areas like, you know, intersection, if no one's stopping, that sort of thing. So that, that's really all I can offer on that front. But I, I'd agree there cyclists like a lot of drivers are not the best at avoiding the rose, the rules of the road in all instances.
Right. You know, now that we're promoting, you know, bike lanes and trying to get more people on bikes, I think there needs to be some sort of education for people. And you're absolutely right. When I went to school, we did have the rodeo and we were taught and we had to license our bike and the police were there and the whole thing. But there just seems to be this cavalier approach on using the trails and certainly people, they're welcome to use the trails. But these cavalier, you know, people, some of these bikes can go at an extreme speed. And if somebody was to move one way, then you've got somebody that's in the hospital or really hurt seriously. So I, I'm, that's why I'm asking the question. It just happened that the guy stopped me as I'm going to the meeting and said, is there anything you can do about bike etiquette? And certainly it's because I said, I almost got hit a couple of times today walking the trails.
Yep. Ken, please.
Yeah, I, I can't disagree with any of it. I'd say it's a related issue for sure. It's a cycling concern, but I mean, in terms of its direct relation to actually a pump track, I think they're sort of two separate issues. So that's, that's really all I can say on that topic.
Counselor Burke, please.
Thanks through the chair, Mr. Kemp. Thank you for coming. I'm, I'm interested in and intrigued by your comments about the synergy of being able to design these into different spaces. Are there any good examples as a counselor who doesn't sort of has, has, has trouble imagining that? Or are there some good examples of how this has been done that we can sort of research or find a visual?
Yeah, sure. So the closest one that I think is a like of a quality that we are trying to emulate, Oxbridge has built one maybe five, six years ago now. That is basically flows seamlessly into their skateboard. It looks great. Stratford, Ontario built one that weaves through the trees in a city park in a very visually appealing way. Belleville has done a similar one on their waterfront park. I personally haven't seen, hadn't gone to visit that one, but there's that. There, there are many, many examples of them all over the world. Essentially, I'm happy to provide as many visuals as you would like to digest.
Anything further, Counselor Burke? Any other questions for Mr. Kemp? Thank you very much, Mr. Kemp, for your detailed presentation. That concludes our, our registered delegations. The next item of business is our consent items. Does anybody want to speak to 10A1? 10A1? That was separated, that would out for Counselor Dugay. I'll mark that one. 10A2? 10A3? 10A3? 10A4? 10A4? 10B1? 10B1? 10C1? 10C1? 10C2? 10C3? 10C4? 10C5? 10C6, Counselor Purnell wants someone separated out. 10C7? 10C8? 10C9? Okay. So if someone would like to move the one motion for the ones that are the consentables, Counselor Baldwin, and we'll go to a vote. And Counselor by, separate Counselor Faciliatus, and we'll go to a vote.
And worship, if I may just clarify.
Sure.
So up for consent this evening would be 10A2 and 10A4.
Correct.
10C2?
Yes.
C3?
Yep, 4.
C4 and 5.
7, 8 and 9.
Thank you. We'll just load those, your worship, for vote.
You wanted to move that, right?
Sure.
We'll get to that one momentarily. And that is carried. 10A1, a member of Council on a 10A1, Counselor Purnell, please. Dugay will separate the appropriate bylaw to it, will be at to bylaws. We'll now go to 10B1, Counselor Crowley, I believe.
No, thank you, Mayor. This might be my last chance to promote the community health center. And so again, the more we promote the need for this, for our community, the better chance we have in getting one in the city of Peterborough. So again, last, last shot at it from what my understanding is, is that the decision should be made by the end of the month. So I just wanted to make sure it's recognized that the, that council has supported this and that in April, we read, we wrote a letter of support. In October, we wrote another letter of support by our mayor, wrote that letter of support. And so again, it all comes down to community support too, that, that helps to make this happen. And again, if I can just go over some of the pluses of all this is that it's new doctors are looking for a new, a model when it comes to being a family doctor. And that's, that will help new doctors come here under a different model. And it's also reduce the pressure on our hospital and lessen emergency department wait times. And it will also connect 6,000 patients plus patients to a doctor or a nurse practitioner. So these are all important pieces to us recruiting doctors in Peterborough and in the region. So just wanted to make sure we, we were recognized for supporting this and that hopefully the application will be successful by the, the end of the month. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Counselor Faciliatus. And I thank you for your work on the physician recruitment because it goes hand in hand with the community health center. Any additional speakers on this item? We'll go to a vote. And that's carried. Counselor Crowley, you're up next.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So in our capacity as counselors, there's reports that I read that I need to read two, three, four more. In this case, five times. I, I still have some questions about it just because financial auditing is not my forte at all. So there's a few questions that I have after sort of rereading the report. So through you, Mr. Chair. To Commissioner Freeman, can you define materiality for me and how they come up with that number?
Your worship, materiality is, 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 first of all, it's based upon a percentage of revenues that, that the auditors would use. So it's a calculation based upon a percentage of revenues that they that they would use to determine their, their sampling size. So materiality is, is in essence, it's, it's if the, if the financial statements contained an error that was above a certain threshold, a decision maker using the information contained within the financial statements may that, it may influence the decision that they would make, the conclusion that they would draw if, if the financial statements contain an error of that magnitude. And so, and so the, the auditors use statistical sampling in their methodology because they can't look at every transaction. We have thousands and thousands, hundreds of thousands of transactions, financial transactions every year. So they have to come up with a way of when they review the accounts and the books and records of the city of Peterborough, what are they going to focus on? And they know through their experience that there are some financial transactions that are more, contain more risk than others, and they'll include that within their sampling techniques. But then there's the, all the others and they will use a materiality threshold to limit how much they need to look at to determine whether or not the financial statements are free from a material misstatement. So that hopefully provides you with some insight as to the approach that they take as they look at all of the transactions in the books and records of the city of Peterborough. We have, you know, just in the operating budget alone, it's over $300 million.
Right.
Made up of, you know, thousands and thousands of financial transactions.
Is, through you, Mr. Chair, is there, is there a reason that that number is set? I know it's, it's based on a percentage, but would it be prudent to perhaps every once in a while drop that number substantially in order to potentially ensure the integrity of the audit? If that makes sense?
Well, so, so your worship, in a sense that they do, because there are certain areas within the, with, within the financial business of the city would attract more financial risk than others. They essentially do that by, by focusing in or, you know, their attention is directed to, you know, to a certain area. And so they will, in, in coming up with where, well, first of all, they meet with myself as treasurer, you know, they ask, they would ask myself or, and, and or perhaps a member of council, is there anything that has drawn, been drawn to your attention that we should focus in on, that, that we should take a look, a closer look at? And they will use that to help guide their, 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 their audit plan. And so in doing so, they will always go above and beyond in terms of their review of the financial books and records.
So thank you for indulging me. Is the point of the audit to find a lapse of, or maybe not a lapse, but to ensure the integrity of the processes and procedures that we have in place? Or is the point of the audit to potentially catch some sort of leakage, let's say, some sort of, you know, errors that, that need to be, you know, holes in the dam that need to be plugged? Is that?
Your worship, the, the, the purpose of the audit, first of all, it is a legislated exercise. We must have a, have an audit that does provincially mandated, legislated. The, the purpose of an audit is to have the auditors and express an opinion
Right.
on, on the financial statements that they are, that they are unqualified and free from material misstatement. That is the purpose of the audit is to express an opinion, their opinion, their professional opinion on whether the financial statements are bona fide and that users can rely upon the information contained in those statements.
Right. And thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm tired of all of the videos and reading I've done about this. So indulge me. The, what sort of sample size do they use? Do we know? And do they let us know prior to doing an audit? What those accounts are? So do they come with us or they, do they come to us? And maybe we don't know, but do they come to us with a big spreadsheet and say, okay, here's the, here's the accounts that we are targeting? We're just going to make sure that everything's good? Or do they sort of come to us afterwards and go, no, you know what? We didn't find any problems. What do we know? A little bit more about the process or?
So, so your worship, so, so we are in constant communication with the auditors, both, both in terms of preparing for the audit, which is the audit plan that you're, that you're hopefully about to approve. They have already met with myself and, and the deputy treasurer in terms of mapping out the schedule about when they're coming onsite to do their field work. We all, we provide all of, we, we make all of the books and records available to them. They operate independently of us. It's not like I, as the treasurer, say, auditors, you know, please look at this, this and this again. Oh, but don't look over here. Right? We don't, we don't, you know, there's
Nor was I suggesting that.
It is, it is
No, no.
An open book.
Right.
And that all of the financial transactions are available to them and they will use their professional opinion in terms of where they want to focus. But like I say, they will, they will have conversations with myself and or the CIO or others that would, that would, that they will use to inform their opinion on where they should look.
I see.
Right? But, but they are independent. They operate independently of us and with, you know, with, without a conflict of interest, obviously.
Right, right. And through you, Mr. Chair, have we, have we as Peterborough ever had a bad report from an audit? Like has anything ever come back saying that, you know, oh gosh, this is not good?
So, so your worship, not in my tenure at the city has the, has, have we had a qualified opinion? They are unqualified. They have been since I have been here. And I think the previous treasurers to myself as well. They provide with the year and financial report, they do provide, if you would recall, when we presented the financial statements to you, there was a schedule of what the auditors call unadjusted differences. So those were things that, items that came to their attention that in a perfect world, they might have seen adjusted. But because they fell under, well under the threshold, they said, no, you, you know what? It's, it's for whatever reason, we're not going to make a big deal about it. We'll note it for, for the finance committee's attention. But we're not requesting that the financial statements be adjusted and they provided that schedule. And I believe one of the counselors, and it might've been Counselor Brielle, actually asked to comment or a question about, about the schedule. So I believe that the, that the materiality threshold was about $8 million or thereabouts last year. And, and they did provide of the thousands and tens of thousands of transactions, I think that came, there was three or four transactions that came to their attention that they said, That's, they said, hmm, this requires a note and a report out to finance committee.
And?
And they do that as a normal practice, they will do that again in, in, as part of their normal practice in this upcoming audit for the 2023 financial statement year.
And just as a follow-up, so nothing, so smaller items like that, that don't actually meet the threshold that was set, that's something that, that you and your team go back and look and say, oh, well, why did this happen, right? But it's not something that would produce a bad audit necessarily or a failing audit.
Well, whether or not they deem it to be material or, or, you know, if they, if they felt that there was a transaction that was, that they, that they needed to bring to your attention, they would not hesitate to do that. When the, when the auditor comes to the podium and makes a verbal report out and some, and, and then sometimes that's a written report and a, and a presentation of the results of their financial statement audit that is presented to committee for your information.
Excellent.
The last couple of years, it has simply been a verbal update, because they didn't feel that there was anything of substance that they actually needed to put in writing, which, which really speaks to the quality of the, of the work that the finance team is doing in putting together the, you know, the financial statement package.
Absolutely, and I, I didn't mean that to be sort of judgmental at all. It's, it's more or less, there's reports that I read that, I mean, I, it's well above my pay grade, but I have to read and read and read to try to understand exactly the process involved. So I really, I appreciate the report, but yes, thank you. I'm, thank you very much.
Counselor Crowley, if I could make a recommendation, if
Yes.
Good case study about auditing at the municipal level.
Yes.
10 years ago, there was a computer acquisition at the city of Toronto. The auditors came in and audited that, and they found some real irregularities in terms of procurement, and it was brought to the attention by a city councillor by the name of Baz Volkeson. He was a city councillor at Scarborough, but it's an interesting case study in auditing.
Well, if I'm, if I may, is it, maybe this is a great question for, for our CIO. Would it, would it be possible at some point to maybe look at having some time in the future? And I know we all have meetings and we're all busy people, but maybe having some sort of seminar on how like auditing or finances or something like that, just because for people like me who don't come from a financial background, you know, I, I do rely heavily on, on Commissioner Freeman and his team to, to, to get all of the numbers, make sure that we're doing everything properly. But I mean, as somebody who never went to school and math is not my game, maybe it would certainly help. I know it would help me. Would that be something that maybe we could think about doing?
Straighten up, please.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, definitely that's the plan, because we are planning to do a orientation type of workshops in the first quarter of next year, because it's not only the auditing, we also want to bring about the snow clearing, and we, we have few about the whole, we do the projects and all the scopes and all this. So we have about four or six topics.
Excellent.
And definitely that's the plan.
Beautiful. All right. Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Mr. Freeman, too. I really appreciate it, Commissioner. Thank you so much.
Counselor Crowley, one time we had an audit committee, and a, a member of council was the chair of the audit committee, and the auditors would come in, reported to, I think there was four or five members of council, and the finance department were there. It was always a, a very interesting informative exercise that worked extremely well.
Yes.
Any further discussions on 10B1? 10B1? No, we'll go to a vote.
Thanks, your worship. I'm just, just going to clarify, is Counselor Crowley moving that?
Yeah, thanks, sir.
And we just need a secondary worship.
Counselor Baldwin, thank you very much. We'll go to a vote. And that is carried. Next item, councillor Parnell, please.
There we go. Thank you very much, Mayor. I, it is my great pleasure to move this report. It's been a long time coming. And again, I just want to thank our, our staff. It's, this has been a true team effort. So thank you very much, Rob and Chelsea, for all of your, your work on this. I did want to address a couple of comments by one of the speakers, just to let you to know that we have indeed listened to the neighborhood, they have had input. It may not have been a formal meeting at City Hall, but we have definitely heard what their concerns were, which is why pickleball is being removed from Knights of Columbus and added to a cluster, a compatible cluster for this type of activity at Bonnerworth. So we have indeed listened to the neighbors. And also just as general knowledge, any new fields or recreational facilities that we build these days that will require outdoor lighting, where they're always going to be LED pointed down. So we're not flooding the whole neighborhood. It's, you know, we don't want the night light bleed. These are things that we have learned over the years and, and do out of respect for, for the citizens. So I'm happy to move it. It's lovely that, you know, Bike and Skateboard, Peterborough Skateboard Association came out as well as, of course, the Pickleball Association came out in support of this body of work. It's always nice to have positive delegations. So there you go. I'm happy to move it and move it to the next level and see phase one happen, which is now the first step with Knights of Columbus, of course, is to build the tennis courts there, so we can move the pickleball to Bonnerworth, and the whole Bonnerworth will be done as a nice, compact, very cohesive project. And thank you.
Thanks very much, Counselor Pernell. Counselor Hickey, please.
Thank you very much.
That I have Counselor Dugay, the Counselor Burke.
Thank you very much, your worship, and through you to Rob. Mr. Toll, I believe was his name.
Correct.
Do we have any noise attenuation that will take place at the existing park or at the new one? And I'm sure you've considered it, but I'd like to hear your thoughts, please.
Crowley, please.
So through you to councillor. Yes, we have heard from the community about noise. We have also been including our noise considerations within the overall report from a consultant. So the consultant has considered that as part of the recommendation for Bonnerworth, there will be noise barriers put in, natural barriers. So we are addressing that concern.
Okay, super. That's it. I, I wish the gentleman had stayed to hear that, but thank you.
Thanks, Chelsea Hickey. Counselor Dugay, please.
Thank you, your worship. I'm completely supportive of this recommendation. I'm aware of the extensive consultation that's occurred with many user groups and to, within our community. I find it very interesting that in, in many instances, what we're talking about and discovering is the evolution of, of outdoor play in our community. 23 years ago, this council and this chambers went out on a limb and decided to accommodate a skateboard park, and it wasn't a popular decision in the community. 23 years later, we're hearing we need to keep up with the times and build something new and, and modern. But we're also accommodating other sports in the same park that did not exist 23 years ago. I certainly support the recommendation. I had occasion to speak to Mr. McCauley prior to this meeting about user fees and sponsorship opportunities, and I'm encouraged by the opportunities that exist across the board on some of our contemplated facilities. Counselor Beamer, there is revenue opportunities and revenue stream to be realized here. So I certainly support this initiative. It's, it will make for a complete and better community. Thank you.
Just want to say, the skateboard park, it was brought in when Sylvia Southern was mayor, and the reason it was bought in is that there were some interesting engages between skateboarders and citizens on sidewalks. So he wanted to improve safety dramatically, so we built a skateboard park. Counselor Burke, please.
Thanks, Mayor Leo. Through you to councillor Parnell. Hi. I, I just have a question for you through, through Mayor Leo. I love, I love everything here. This is incredible. It feels like it aligns with our strategic plan. It feels like it's a very forward-thinking overall plan and specifically at Bonnerworth. Can you share with us what the sort of plan at this stage of it looks like for Bonnerworth? Are the, the diamonds are going, but is there any sense of where things are going to be laid out? Or is there more to come with that?
Counselor Parnell or?
Thank you. Through your mayor, Rob, did you want to? Because I know, I know he's got it all planned out. I don't have a copy of that with me this evening.
Crowley, please.
Through the chair to Counselor Burke. So for the facility fit, what we've done is looked at the size and the requirements we're looking for from the user group feedback. We don't have an actual plan for where everything is going to be situated, because things such as the trees, the landscape, the noise barriers, pieces like that all need to be considered as part of also our community consultation piece. So engaging the neighborhoods around that of what they're looking for as well. So we know what we can fit in the park. Now, the next stage will be, if this is approved, to work towards the actual design phase, which will be the community feedback, the user group feedback will coming together.
Anything further, Counselor Burke? Good. Any further members at this time? Counselor Beamer is seconded. We'll go to a vote. And that is carried. Counselor Baldwin, maybe I could just ask you to chair the meeting for a moment on the notice of motion that I brought for. Think that'd be?
Oh.
Yes, 10D. Someone like to move item 10D? Counselor Pernell, Counselor Crowley? Any further comments or questions? We'll go to a vote.
Thanks, your worship. Just to clarify, we are on item 10D1.
We are.
It's the item.
And we'll deal with 10D2 and 10D3.
And it's councillors Parnell and Crowley.
Correct.
And we'll just load that vote, your worship.
And that is carried. 10D2, the acquisition of the property in Matchit Line. Counselor Beamer, Counselor Hickey, further comster questions? We'll go to a vote. And that is carried. Counselor Hickey's move 10D3, a seconder. Counselor Chica, comster questions? Go to a vote. Baldwin, please.
Yeah. Colleagues, we'll go to item 11A, and I'll go to Mayor Leo.
Thanks very much, Counselor Baldwin. I think the, the notice of motion is, is pretty clear. I don't think I, I need to go through it line by line. Just to give you a background, Ben Abreth is contacting mayors right across Canada in order to bring this standard motion forward, which will be forwarded on to the Honorable Verrett, the Minister of Justice, and the Attorney General of Canada, and the Honorable Nita Anon, the President of Treasury Board of Canada. Just a brief background. I've had a very long association with Ben Abreth, and at one time, Ben Abreth was really active in the city of Peterborough in terms of a lot of charitable causes. The main families that were involved for many decades, we all know the names, the Shurney family, the Black family, the Graustein family, the Levine family, the Siegel family, the Gilman family, and it goes on and on and on. And we're all aware of, of the incident that occurred in the House of Commons a number of weeks, weeks ago. And Ben Abreth, of course, is moving these motions across Canada. And we're all aware of the rise of anti-Semitism in, in North America, indeed in many of our communities. So I wanted to bring this motion forward and to move it on to, on to the Parliament of Canada.
Thanks, Mayor Leo. It's moved by Mayor Leo and seconded by councillor Brielle. Are there any comments or questions? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, we'll go to a vote.
Next item is other business. Other business, once, twice, three times. Someone like to move the confirmation bylaw, moved by councillor Burke, seconded by councillor Crowley. We'll go to a vote. That is carried. Counselor Beamer, you're moving adjournment. Secular for councillor Baldwin. We'll go to a vote. And that is carried. Thank you, colleagues. Thank you, staff, and thanks to the audience that's been with us this evening.